Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the River Falls City Council Meeting of May 23rd. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristy, grab a roll call please.
Beerstead.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Donnie.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Will Dean.
Here.
Okay, next our approval of the minutes from the May 9th workshop and regular meeting minutes.
I move approval.
Second.
First and second on minutes, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to approve of the bills with Mr. Beerstead.
Mayor and Council, I move to approve payment of bills in the amount of eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents, subject to the Comptroller's Review.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll go into public comments, is there anybody in the audience has anything like to say now would be your time? Okay, we will move on and we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on the annual liquor license and beer license renewals. This is a hearing and disposition for each licensed class. Is there anybody in the audience has anything like to say about this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing. And first thing I'll do is, uh, first thing I want to do is call, we have three new agents tonight, I'd like to call them forward for some questions. First, we have Scott, I hope I say this right, Damiani? Yep, come on up. And next we have Emma Gaustad and Jason Nygard. If you three could please come up. And Mr. Morsette.
As I mentioned to you earlier, I ask every agent three questions. Ms. Gaustad, I think, has already been an agent, but I'll ask her to just reaffirm those three. So I'll, we'll let you sign in here real quick and then we'll get to that. Alright, that's good. Alright, so again, I'll ask you to reaffirm Ms. Gaustad and then the two new agents, I'll ask you to, to acknowledge. And I'll ask them, you can all answer them at the same time if you want. Do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes.
Okay. Do you understand that if you're not, if you're not present, even when an alcohol-related violation occurs, you're responsible?
Yes.
And do all three of you have your responsible server certificate?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have.
Thanks, James. Okay, so next I'll take a roll call, make sure all of our agents are here. I'll just call off your name if you just wanted to raise your hand. You're playing good. Brenda Overman. And, uh, Robert Johnson. Steve Jurl. Jeffrey Powers. Eric Amundson. Alejandro Castro. Kristen Kimms. I hope I'm saying everybody's last name right. Michelle Reinhardt. Andrew Kuhn. Riley Larson. Michelle Meyer, Ma, sorry, Michelle, wherever you are, there you are.
Back there, yep.
Um, Taryn Tarns. Uh, David Dintman. Jeffrey Wusley. Boy, you just tell me if they're here, I'll just.
I'll tell you, you keep reading.
Um, let's see, Temma Myers. Uh, Brandon Ruzink?
Ooh, no Brandon.
Brandon Ruzink for, uh, Quick Trip Store, 453.
Alright, we'll have to table that one.
Okay, not here, so they'll have to wait. Patrick Smith.
Yeah, I saw Pat here earlier, yep.
Um, Charles Kamrowski.
Charlie's here, yep.
Tammy Duran.
Yep, she's here.
Eugene Gavin.
She knows her, yep.
Robert Comstock. Kirk Mueller.
Yep.
Greg Peters.
Yep, Craig just walked in.
Deborah DeLander.
Yep.
Brian Weber.
Brian Weber is a no-show.
Okay, that's Moose Lodge, okay. Daniel Suffield.
Yeah.
Um, Trevor Rothstein.
Yep.
Tom Pulios.
Yep.
Dustin Hanson.
Yep.
Fred Barr.
Yep, Fred's here, Paul's here, yep.
Cody Satra.
Yep.
Uh, Robin Bowles.
Yep.
Anthony Leon.
Yep.
Okay, so just the Moose Lodge and Quick Trip when we make the motions will not be.
Quick Trip 453.
453, yep. Will not be part of the motions. Okay, so next we'll move on to suggestion motion number one. Uh, grant renewals for the Class A Beer Licenses and Class A Cider Only Licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance. And this would include both Bob and Steve's Stores, number four, and number six. And I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we grant the Class A Beer License and Class A Cider Only License, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is, uh, grant renewals for the Combination Class A Liquor and Class A Beer Licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance. And this would include Aldi, Divine Liquors, uh, Dolgan Corp., Erickson's Diversified Corporation, Hometown Liquors, uh, Indian Head Oil Company, uh, Quick Trip 301, I'll squip, I'll, I'll skip 453, uh, Quick Trip 1104, uh, Bojans Flowers and Gifts, Walgreens, and Whole Earth Cooperative.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we grant renewals for the Combination Class A Liquor and Class A Beer License, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance.
Second.
Do we have to mention that?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just gonna make sure that you know I'm gonna recuse myself on this due to my employment.
Do, do we have to mention that we're not including Quick Trip 453 in this one?
You already stated prior to the motion that Quick Trip 453 is omitted.
Okay, so we got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next we'll go on to. Everything's sticking. This will be, uh, grant renewals for Class B Beer Licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance. This would be for Luigi's Pizza, this would be for the River Falls Baseball Council, Steve's Pizza, and Tattersalls.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant renewals for the Class B Beer Licenses, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll go on to Class C Wine Licenses, and that's contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance. And that would be the River Falls Baseball Council and Steve's Pizza.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we grant the Class C Wine License, contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance.
Second. First and second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to. Uh, grant renewals for the Combination Class B Liquor and Class B Beer Licenses, contingent on all licensing requirements being met at the time of issuance. Second, let me make sure I got the right ones here. Okay, this would include the American Legion, Bros Sports Bar and Grill, Burrito X, Emma's Bar, Fall Cedar, Johnny's Bar, Johnny's Restaurant and Tap House, Lazy River, Mariachi Loco, Mel's Midtowner, Nutty Squirrel, Patty's Pub and Box Tea House, River Falls Golf Course, uh, The Lodge, we're gonna leave out, Shooter's Pub, St. Croix Lanes, Swinging Bridge, Tarnation Tavern, and West Wind Subber Club.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, that was Junior's Restaurant and Tap House, correct?
What did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, Junior's Tap House.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move we grant renewals for the Combination Class B Liquor and Class B Beer Licenses, contingent on all license requirements being met at the time of issuance.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I think we're done.
Yeah, that's it for licensing. You guys are more than welcome to stay.
Of other exciting, yeah.
You were already in there.
You're in it.
Yeah.
You're in there somewhere.
You're in there, Taryn.
You're in there somewhere.
Don't worry. It's one I recuse myself on.
Give everybody a chance to get out of here.
Let the crowd settle.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for coming, guys. Okay, next we'll move on to ordinance 2023-09. Uh, I'm sorry, we gotta create, we gotta close the council hearing, open a public hearing on ordinance 2023-09, creating section 9.08.080 of the Municipal Code relating to camping on public property. And this is a first reading. Is there anybody in the audience has anything to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing if they have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions.
Yep.
Uh, my question is for our city administrator, Scott Simpson. My question is, is, uh, I noticed the city is not recommending this action. Could you explain to the council why?
I, I don't read that as, as, uh, us not recommending. We've drafted the ordinance as requested based on our discussion about council, yeah, the council. I'd say, I'd say we're neutral at, you know, it's a, there's a policy decision for the council. We, we have suggested one possible solution to, to the policy option for you.
So, question for you, Mr. Simpson. Would this potentially put a undue hardship on our law enforcement to try enforcing it?
Um, I, I guess we don't think the volume of interactions that we're gonna have is gonna be something that our law enforcement couldn't sustain. Certainly could have the chief answer that.
Yeah.
Good evening. Yes, that would be correct. Either way, um, the police department is looking for direction from city council um, and how they would, um, look for the police department, the city staff to assist those.
So you're saying it would potentially put an undue hardship on?
No, we can, we, we do have the, the staff to help. Either way, if you don't go forward with the city ordinance, or if you do, we have the sources available. And as we've said for many months now, that we take each person separately, it's an individualized approach in how we help them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just a follow-up, Chief, if I could, so would you, I maybe read between the lines more than I should have in this one. I got the sense that this would give you more clear direction and more ability to enforce that, that, that camping or that, that occurrence. Would that be fair, or is that not?
Right, um, either way, it will be a clear direction.
Yeah.
What the city and the city council look for, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, I'm not sure, Chief, if you're the one to answer, but do we, um, do we have enough resources currently for those who are, um, experiencing housing instability? Because if we put them in a situation where they can't camp, they don't have somewhere to live, and we're going to find them, we're putting them in a situation of paying fines they can't afford. So do we have available resources in the community to house everyone that's currently experiencing housing instability?
We do.
Okay.
And we have special, um, MOU set up with St. Croix, Pierce County, our neighbor's place, and Grace Place.
Okay.
Um, for, for those that are in this situation, they just choose not to use their services.
Okay.
And our staff would even be willing to transport those in need to those facilities too.
Okay.
That's what we do.
Um, something I think to add on to what Ms. Miller had, had to say was, this isn't only about homeless, this is, um, or people that, um, are looking for a place to live. This is people that are wanting to recreationally park or, you know, camp in somebody's backyard on city property and that too. My take on it is that, um, anytime after sunset and before sunrise, if you're on these lands, it's probably leading to no good. So I look forward to us making clarity on this and not only for the, just for anybody that's deciding that they wanna camp um, on the, the city property.
Right. And I can assure you, the police department will help anyone in this situation, whether this passes or it doesn't pass. We're here to help those. And as Mr. Simpson stated in the ordinance is that, this is, or it is stated in, in the write-up is that this is not criminal, it's a forfeiture.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
I've got something for staff, if I could.
Question for Mr. Simpson. Um, when this was drafted, and I'm not sure who approached you to put it on the agenda, but was there any consideration of a professional psychologist working with the city for best practices when it came to difficult individuals who may be suffering homelessness?
I think we've considered several aspects of camping, so I don't believe we looked at the city employing those services that's not a business we're in um, or have expertise in. We have memorandum of understanding with the social service agencies in both counties, and we've also specifically, um, have agreements with the River Falls, our neighbor's place, um, housing assistance, and then also with Grace Place for family assistance. So unless we hear direction from the council that that's a service line that you want us to move into, that's, that wasn't the intent. The intent is that we're starting also to get recreational campers on, primarily on what we consider to be conservation lands, so not necessarily designated park, um, facilities. As you know, the city has extensive green space, uh, in the community, and it's not all parks. Parks have hours right now. There's a specific prohibition of camping in parks. We don't have a specific prohibition, and so the, we're asking the council to let us understand what your, your, uh, direction is as far as the use of public properties specifically for camping. So we, it's, yes, we think we've looked at some of the housing instability issues that are related to this, and it's certainly something that's part of it, but it's also just an increase in people saying we're gonna head on down behind Glen Park and practice our Boy Scout skills and things. Um, and that's, we've heard that that's not what the intent of those spaces are by the city council, that you like camping to occur in our, um, designating campground in Hoffman. This ordinance we did put in, so we thought about just an outright, there is none, and then you see the pro, B2, is there because of our concern about housing instability, and it does allow the city council or the chief of police to, to do a special order in circumstances they think it's necessary. The city council one will probably be things like, uh, if we have a bike race at Whitetail Ridge, we typically have a request, can they have camping for 24 hours at that, that site? Um, you may get a request for a Boy Scout troop to do a camping on a certain piece of property and give us notice and tell us where they're gonna be. This would allow the council to approve that kind of use of the property too.
I, uh, that leads right into my question. I sh, I thought about this this morning, but do, do we have designation over in Hoffman Park? I know in the past, uh, uh, park director Dankie has allowed tent camping when the, when the camping facility was full across the road, kind of over by the ballpark, in some field over there. I think that we should recognize that somewhere and give her that flexibility if she wants to, if she wants to grant tent camping in that areas, similar to what they pay, uh, you know, a fee to camp in the campgrounds. They have to register, they have to do all that stuff, it can't just be willy-nilly, but, um, that I don't think is designated as campground area today. Uh, and maybe she doesn't wanna do that anymore either, but maybe when it comes back for the second reading, we could address or not address if we don't wanna do it, um, that area.
Yeah, so the council, that's discretion. If you wanted to add an employee of the city specifically, you also could leave it, assuming that the chief of police would coordinate with the, the parking reg, manager, so.
I'm fine with that.
That, this, there's no magic to the way this was drafted. We're trying to accomplish what we understand um, the concern is, and then if it, that's one thing I've heard, um, this also includes the right-of-way. So, the other thing the council should consider is Cousin Eddie is visiting, um, that's not allowed under this ordinance. Unless they park on private property, so you can pull, you know, grandma, grandpa, uncle, cousin can pull their RV into your private driveway, but they wouldn't be able to camp, set up camp, um, on the street under this ordinance. And so that's, unless the council did a special declaration, so you could say for River Falls Days, for three days, people can camp, um, in certain spots in the right-of-way, or you could designate when the River Falls Days um, request comes forward from the council, the chamber, they could request that there's some camping for the carnival workers or something like that. So there's some flexibility built in. The council can add flexibility, so if there's existing things you're concerned about, you could add those in now. You kinda have the blanket authority. And that's probably a okay word to use, but, I mean, you have the authority to determine situations in which the council wants to declare. And it doesn't have to be an emergency, it can be special declaration, so it can just be, there's something about this weekend, this time, this circumstance that makes sense for you.
Seeing how it's about multiple things and not just camping, I think that makes a lot of sense, Scott. Designated locations like Councilmember Morsette said would be something that we should look at doing.
I have, I have a question, um, too. So, uh, if I look at this, you might include all the blankets on Second Street, um, before the River Falls Day Parade as camping. Any bedding, sleeping bag, or other sleeping materials placed in the right-of-way.
I like it.
So we may want to consider, uh, uh.
Leaving that in there?
We may want to consider the effect of that.
Effect is good.
I, unless you specifically would tell us at the next reading of this ordinance that you intend for us to consider blankets and chairs left on Second Street for the parade, we, we likely would not. We would not interpret the ordinance that way.
Going back to the right-of-way situation, I could see if Cousin Eddie's coming in from Nevada or something, that, um, you could ask for like a two-day or a three-day permit to say Cousin Eddie's gonna park there, so. Is there any way we could maybe put together a, a process that they, that, that homeowner files for a permit to let Cousin Eddie park in front of their house for three days, or? And, you know, we, we set up a maximum and.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying three days, but, um.
You could, you have the authority to do that, so that's something the council wants us to consider for the future reading. We could draft language like that.
I'd be, I'd be comfortable with something like that.
Me too.
Maybe a maximum of five days, I don't know, we can jump around in a number here, but.
Right, I'd like to keep it down, so it's not like extended.
It can't be two hours.
You don't wanna create too much extra work either.
No.
My suggestion would be to, to take this, um, proposed ordinance as it is and then see what's, what pain points there are and address them when, when we have some, rather than try to anticipate them ahead of time.
I think the only challenge with that is that i, if we don't add some of these, like the, the RV parking, then that puts the burden on the police force, staff to enforce it, rather than acknowledge it and allow it. I know there's some community policing actions that you guys can take, have some latitude on, but, but, um, I think that one would be one that, that we may wanna, you know, we may wanna try to see if staff can't craft something for us to consider for the next, for the next ordinance, or for the next reading. Probably needs to be some limitation on length of the RV, uh, and, and days.
I'm actually not seeing where this would cover an RV if, in fact, you didn't like set up camping stuff in the right-of-way. It, it doesn't appear to me to, um, uh, to cover just a parked vehicle, but perhaps I'm misunderstanding something.
Yeah. You're, you're actually correct, it wouldn't cover an RV.
Right.
In, in the right-of-way.
But it, it, just if they like put up tents next to the RV.
Correct.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought.
Well, okay, then I don't think we've, I don't think we've got a concern.
Attorney Gerhart, though, would you? This is good, good, uh, discuss at this point. I, I actually read, says lane two shack or any other structure or any vehicle or part thereof. Would you not include RVs as a vehicle?
Yeah, I, I think we could argue that an RV is a vehicle too, depending upon if it's motorized, but I think the intent is, so it was a question for the councils, do you want to prohibit RV camping, and if so, to what extent? I mean, do you want, you know, a permit process where someone could have an RV in the right-of-way for five days in a calendar year? It just, you know, we should have some parameters to it.
I think my, my intent, and I'd like to hear the other council members think, but I don't wanna see a, a fifth wheel unhooked from a truck, I don't wanna see a pop-up unhooked from a truck or trailer or car. I, I, I would be comfortable with an RV of a certain length parked on the street in a, you know, in a parking allowed area for a period of days. When you mention right-of-way, I get, you know, I start to think about the thing is up on the curb between the sidewalk and the curb, that's, I don't want that, but I'm fine with the Cousin Eddie scenario on the street. I don't know what else.
For a period of time.
For a period of time.
Yeah.
One thing I would think about if we're talking about travel trailers, fifth wheels, um, is when they extend, that's a, I mean, they would extend into the middle of the street.
Oh, that's good, that's a good point.
So that, I mean, that would create a lot of driving problems too. I just thought of that, 'cause we have one.
Mr. Mayor, I guess a question I would have would be just, so we're throwing a, a lot of one-offs here. If we're including the RV discussion here, how many instances a year are we looking at that would, if we counted that as a violation, and then we include the things we've already discussed? Is it 40? Is it 60? Is it 80? Do we have a sense? So that we can kind of benchmark that to know, 'cause I'm, I'm kind of in favor of where Councilmember Rodine's at. Let's just more or less go forward and then see problems from there.
I don't think this would be a priority enforcement activity for police. It's likely to be done um, when there's available time to do so, but I, anecdotally, there's well more than a hundred nights a year going on in River Falls currently, I suspect. There's a lot of, there's a lot of campers' RVs. We, we have 6,000 residences, and there's, so even if it's a small per, proportion, that's a large number of nights that people are camping. So one of the policy questions for you is, do you want people to be using the public property for camping, and then what do you define that as? I would be thoughtful about doing a lot of carve-outs, because then you start, then you're starting to have different treatment for different people and different circumstances. you're starting to have different treatment for different people and different circumstances, which, um, so far there, I don't think there's case law that would prohibit you from doing that, but I would be very thoughtful about, the policy question is, do you or don't you want to allow the use of public property, including the right of way, um, for sleeping and camping?
And one consideration too is, you know, camping in the right of way is arguably a, a safety issue as well, since people would be sleeping parked on the side of the road.
So admittedly, this is a, this is the widest policy. What's been drafted is do it on private property or at the campground. That's what the, and then it's allowing a special or emergency declaration by the council of police, which we would expect would be used very sparingly. So that's the way it's drafted. And the council can modify that how it feels most appropriate. You could take out the right of way and say that's, we're not going to worry about that. We're just going to do other public property besides right of way. Or you can say you only are worried about right of way and you don't care about conservancy areas. That's fine for people to camp on conservancy areas. I just, you have to help us understand, um, the, the policy direction that you want to go, because then we can provide lawful, compassionate, um, equitable enforcement.
I do have, have one other follow up question. Are there any parking regulations about, um, uh, RVs or the length of time someone may park it?
There is currently some, there, there is currently already kind of a mesh network of, um, parking regulations and moving a vehicle so often, forty eight hours and, and so that would be, there's some availability for police to do that currently. Um, so.
Okay, thank you.
I, I gotta say, I'm gonna have to agree with Diane on this, just past the way it is. I mean, we can, we could sit here all night and, well, what if this happens or what if that happens? We can do that with every agenda that we have, but I think looking for the, looking for a problem that might happen and just waiting to see if there are issues and we can take care of them, so.
So what do we do with, with somebody that's going to park their camper in, in front of their house on the street? Because right now, the way it's written, they're violating.
Well, like, like, like Scott said, we're not out actively looking for that.
I know, but a neighbor can complain about it and say, hey.
Well, yeah, neighbor can complain about it. They can do that now.
Yeah, I know they could now. So what are we, are we going to continue that?
I would assume we'll treat it the same way we do now.
All right. So the, the neighbors will be pleasing each other in a sense.
In a sense, like they do now.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
I, we, this does not come with planned proactive enforcement.
Enforcement, right.
So it's, we would largely rely on complaint based enforcement as we do for almost all, except for we now have some proactive code enforcement, which is funded by the, the council in the last budget.
Yeah, I just liked, uh, backing up a little bit. It's, my understanding is this is, this is, uh, this really isn't about RVs, or at least that wasn't the thought behind this. This is about, you know, camping, camping down along McKinney, camping, um, you know, and our, our other conservancy areas, which I see as a, you know, safety, you know, uh, public order, public health, um, kind of issue, uh, that, that I personally think we ought to have some regulations about, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess I, I, I agree with council member Odean about, um, let's pass this and see what, see what comes of it. There's too many, too many rabbit holes we can go down.
So, so I just want to make sure we're saying, and I, and I'm not disagreeing, but there's no camping of any form except in the campground and, um.
Private property.
And private property.
Unless they get a spe- special.
Permit or, and is it going to be a permit or just permission that they, they get?
So like there's a special event or something like, he said like Boy Scouts up on the mound?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's actually private property.
Well, that is true.
Okay, well.
Or the bike thing and that, I think they come to us for that, right?
So I'll summarize what I think staff is gonna do and then you can tell us if you want us to do something different. So I, I haven't heard a consensus for us to draft any changes to this ordinance or options. Um, now staff would be available to do that if there's individual council members that want help drafting an amendment that you want to propose, we can assist you with that. But as a group, I haven't heard you want us to specifically go down the permit process. I heard discussion, but then I didn't hear consensus. So that's what I, what we're understanding is what you read at the first reading, we'll come back at the second reading, you have another public hearing, gives people time to give you feedback on what they think about it. And then at the second hearing, you, individual council members could introduce amendments if they wanted to go down the permit route, um, add or subtract right of way, change rules. Um, the one thing I would suggest is if you want us to go through like a permit process or something and you really feel that's something you want to, um, mandate staff do, that's one where we'd kind of like a chance to come back then after a couple more weeks so we can research and kind of get our ducks in our hole for that. Because right now, we'd just be relying on non-emergency police number, kind of, and trying to anticipate things as they come up with the chamber or others and, and work it that way. We, I don't, we aren't looking unless the council wants to direct us to do so. We're not looking for a new permit process or reservation system or something like that.
I'm, I'm happy if you bring it back the way it is.
Next move on to the consent agenda. Uh, acknowledgement of the following minutes. We have the parking rec advisory board of four nineteen. We have the utility advisory board of four seventeen. We have the West Central Wisconsin BioSalads Facility of four twenty. We have the pla- planning commission from four five. We have historic preservation commission from four twelve. We have the library board from four three, and we have River Falls Housing Authority from four twelve. Next one is a resolution recommending approval of the purchase of a three-phase transformer. Uh, this would authorize approval of a purchase with border states for a three-phase fifteen hundred KVA paid mo- pad mount transformer in the amount of sixty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Next one is resolution authorizing a contract with Sylvester Stump Grinding for tree and yard debris grinding services. This would be a three-year contract with Sylvester Stump Grinding for grinding of the trees and yard debris. And last one is a resolution approving interfund loan policy. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there's items eight through twelve on the back of your agenda.
Well, those are ordinance and resolution.
Those are ordinance and resolutions.
Thank you.
Those are something different.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda.
Wait a minute.
Yep, hang on. Okay, hang on, Mr. Buick, number seven?
Yep.
Okay, anybody else?
Now may I move?
Yep, you may.
Okay, now I will move for approval of consent agenda items for A through G, five and six.
Second.
First and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Uh, then Mr. Buick, you pulled number seven.
Yeah, I just want a better understanding of this if I could. And then, um, um, I, I guess in a sense I have some issues where because it, um, one of the, and I'm trying to pull it back up, but, um, it, the, the, the last thing it says on these points is that the city administrator has, can, um, make decisions to, um, transfer funds or, um, and I can't remember how it was worded, but I, I have, oh, there's a , um, for other needs or deemed appropriate by the city administrator. I kind of have issues with that, not because it's Mr. Simpson, but just knowing that, um, I, I don't think it should be an individual. I'd like to strike that line from there.
We, I'm ca- is this?
Is for other needs as deemed appropriate by the city administrator. And there's another spot where that shows up too, so.
Is that in the resolution or the minutes or the memo?
It's in the.
It's actually in the policy that's attached.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's what, we, we, we give our city administrator the authority, uh, in consultation with, uh, senior staff to make these kinds of, um, uh, decisions, uh, and to have oversight over it in a number of ways. So someone's got to make that decision and I don't think it's something that necessarily needs to come before the city council for approval, is my opinion.
I, I do believe, I do believe that there's a, uh, I, I know I read in here somewhere that there's a, uh, report or af- reaffirmation of the city administrator's actions that we would give.
Right.
At a later date. I think the reason that as, as I worked with staff to help draft this policy, the reason it's in there for the citi- city administrator is because if there's a, if there's a need for a quicker action than a council meeting will allow for, that gives him the latitude to do so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, or her in the future, yeah. Um, I think that the city administrator's purchasing authority is, help me, Mr. Simpson, fifty thousand?
Correct.
So, I mean, he could make decisions of up to fifty, but, um, you know, these, these interfund transfers, my real intent with this whole thing was just to memorialize them and, um, I think there's a lot of interfund transfers that happen intra-year and maybe, maybe finance director, uh, so, uh, can help us here, but, um, I think there's a lot of interfund transfers that happen during the year that get resolved before year end and we don't even know happened.
Yeah.
And I'm not really sure that we, I'm not necessarily interested in getting that far down in the weeds in the budget. I bother the finance director enough as it is.
Yeah. I just have, um, issues where it'd be a single individual and, um, and again, not that it's Mr. Simpson, but just maybe there needs to be a fifty thousand dollar limit or something, I don't know, but I think that's, um, a lot of onus and a lot of, um, um, risk letting one individual have that, um, power.
Yeah, so just to provide some context, um, you know, these are going to be purchases that are approved through some combination of the budget process, the capital improvement plan, and then of course, when we come to you to seek spending authorization, um, these would be for purchases that you as a council have already approved. You likely would have seen a sources and uses table identified for these sorts of things, which would provide for some combination of borrowing or an interfund loan. So what we're essentially doing is council still has the authority to ultimately approve these expenses, understanding that some amount of interfund loans would be required to finance it. And then really it is, um, staff that would effectuate that when the time comes by identifying an interest rate to apply when, um, the recipient of the loan is in a position to be able to repay that, like a tax increment district later in its life, for example. So, um, the intent isn't, I don't believe, to necessarily unilaterally a staff identify things to, to, to spend the money on and then do interfund loans for. These would be things that you're, you're seeing, you're approving with sources and uses tables provided at the time you're approving them.
I have, I have a question for you. So would there have been anything in this last year that the staff would have wanted to do, but without this resolution wasn't able to do that you can think of?
No, not that I can think of. An example of an interfund loan that we ha- actually haven't implemented yet because, um, the, the financing needs not there yet is the, um, development and tax increment district number eight, um, the multifamily development. There is a portion of that that's low to moderate income housing. So we were going to, uh, finance the development incentive that's being provided there with an advance from the envi- uh, excuse me, from the housing reserve fund in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to TID eight. So council, that's an example where council was provided with, um, a request by staff to enter into a development agreement with this expense, understanding that this interfund loan would be the financing source for that. And then staff will, when the time comes and that interfund loan is actually needed, staff will just effectuate that, effectuate council's intent there.
With this, um, now policy here, will this, um, be retroactive too, to go back like on the loans that went out for, from the environmental impact of a million dollars and half a million dollars? Does that fit into this category now too?
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, no.
Well, yeah, no, so what, um, what this does provide for is a staff will come to council once a year. It may be as part of the audit review and financial statement presentation around that time, um, separately provided by staff or by the auditor, where we will provide a summary of the loans to date that are currently outstanding, that have been provided, both the, um, the, the lending fund and the borrowing fund.
Okay. And, um, and it's probably in there, Josh, but how, how often? You'll do that once a year? You'll go through the review of that?
Correct.
So when would we expect to see that review now for the first time?
Yeah, so for the first time, our audit and financial statement, we believe we're on schedule compared to a normal year. So you'll likely be seeing that presentation in July sometime. So that would be around the time that we can provide you with a summary of, of all of that interfund loan activity to date.
All right. All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Josh, quick question for you. Could you give us an example of the formal process and how it's typically done? Like when you, when you approve an interfund?
So to, to be clear, we don't have a formal process right now.
That's my point. So when you look at what council member Buick was getting at, you know, it's not necessarily about, uh, how do I put this? Where it goes, it's more about just having a process where there's some accountability, I think is what he's getting at.
Well, respectfully, there's accountability because the council is authorizing and approving this. So this would be authorizing and approving it again, not for the first time. So I, just in case there's misunderstanding about that, you are approving the borrowing of money at the time of the expense. Now, there has been cases in my fourteen years here where that wasn't always the case, right? The memo may not have been as clear as it should have been or could have been, but council has instructed us numerous occasions to have sources and uses to try to identify what, what we expect the spending to be from. And even in the newer TID plans, now we're showing the interfund borrowing and it's also incorporated in the language in the development agreement. So in many cases, you're going to be approving a developer's agreement, a TID plan, and the actual expenditure of the funds, all which will say the source of that funding is interfund. You could, you could add to this that you also want to forth the approval in that case where the council would approve the actual accounting or the, the moving. So we don't have multiple checkbooks at the city, so you're not writing checks from one fund to the other. This is basically cash management within those, um, those funds. And it's always been audited, so there's been accountability for the money. It's a question of, frankly, this, what this is doing now is it's saying that we will set some interest terms. It is giving the administrator the authority to set those terms and then it's reported each year to the council and then every five years, the whole policy comes to the council. So you have a chance to say, is this the way we want to continue to operate going forward? So, um, it's totally within the policy realm of the council. You can have as many approvals of money. These are, and these are all large expenditures. We're not, I can't think of any interfund transfers that are less than fifty thousand dollars within my existing, so, so you, you, it's unlikely that anything, even under the current purchasing policy, you wouldn't have had a formal approval of the funding. So, um, but the council has the ability, that's why we're bringing these policies in front of you and we're kind of going methodically through all these funds and these fund policies to, to let the council have some say in how they want to do this.
Scott, would you agree that it's been a transparent process for what it has been?
I think that's up to somebody other than me to say whether they think.
I'll just, if I could, I'll just jump in here. I, you know, my intention with this request was not to, to say, hey, we don't have a bright light on these transfers, you know, to, to the finance director's point, these things are happening in workshops and in, and laid out in staff memos and everything else. My intent, my desire here was to memorialize these for future council and also to set an interest rate that represents today's borrowing rates, uh, so that the fund is getting the best use of, of that, the best return for that loan. That was my intent. Um, i- i- I, I, I agree. I think, I think we've got plenty of oversight. I have no concerns with the, the audit process or with council. I have no concerns with the audit process or with council having information because we, we get plenty of that through the reports. Again, my desire was, we got to memorialize these for future council. Council seats change, people change, and we got to set an interest rate today so that the fund knows what, what it can expect for a return on that loan. That was it.
Perfect.
Yep, so you're, and this is, this is a dual process. The council has asked through workshops and others to have more, more memorializing of what you've decided. We're also doing that on the staff side, right? So as we have attrition or turnover changes in our staffing too, these are, this is a good thing because it, it lays out how we are operating for that particular thing. And we also, our fin, we've had the fortune of having more complexity in our finances, right? Our finances are more complex today than they were ten years ago. We have more funds, more projects, more developers' agreements, and we've, I, I believe we've done a good job of being stewards of the money, which means we now have more significant pockets and funds that need to be monitored. And then we believe we're recommending to the council the best use of those funds, essentially to avoid borrowing that money from somebody else. We're loaning within these, these funds. So transparency, we have not felt the staff that that's what you've been telling us, is that we haven't been giving you enough transparency. We understand that. That's why this was drafted this way is lets you know what staff is going to be doing, what council's going to be doing, how often you should see this. And it does change the policy. It specifically changed the policy on interest. Right now, I have full authority to charge zero percent interest, you know. I wouldn't have the authority really to write off that, that still would come in front of you, but I could charge zero percent if we felt that was necessary to manage the cash. And this policy is saying that's, that's not what the council is hoping for.
So it's the interest and the term during the time?
Well, we didn't call out the term because a lot of times these funds are used for economic development and the repayment period is unclear. TIDS can take off quickly and there's repayment ability, or they can take a while, or we will, in a lot of cases, we won't repay the general fund, you know, the general fund loan to the TID until the TID closes, then we get it all back. I think that's what we did with number five, is that the original industrial park?
So we extend the TID, then that extends?
Then we'd extend that, yeah. We're also managing, we're managing cash flow, which you shall be concerned about. I mean, that's one of Josh's primary roles is to make sure we make payroll and pay our bills. But we're also managing the levy limits, expenditure restraint program. So, so the timing of payments from one fund to the other can impact what the levy limit worksheet looks like, what the expenditure restraint program worksheet looks like. It can have an impact on grant eligibility. So, so there's, as I mentioned, there's, there's quite a bit of complexity going on to try to figure out, is it interest only for five years and then is it seven years? And we, we often say, well, this is our plan, we're going to do five years of interest only. Well, then we have cash flow, so we say, well, now we're going to charge two percent, pay principal and interest because we've got the cash flow to do it. So admittedly, we, we have had wide flexibility, always reported, always approved, but this will reduce some flexibility. And the council needs to determine if that's a reasonable amount of flexibility that's reduced or not. I'm okay without the policy.
Well.
I'm not.
Is this going to add to workload unnecessarily? I mean?
No, it doesn't, no. I think to Scott's point, you know, one thing to maybe keep in mind and Councilmember Morris said alluded to it too, is especially with TIDS, and of course this would be something we would be coming back to council to seek authorization for, but you could run into a scenario where you've established that interest rate at either prime local government investment pool or kind of local market borrowing and you intend to proceed forward and then something comes along for that TID where maybe it requires an amendment to the original project plan, a development comes along with a specific ask that wasn't maybe originally anticipated. And then that'll be a conversation where we're coming back to council saying, hey, based on this policy, we're intending to begin that repayment at this interest rate, but something unforeseen came along that requires that use of cash flow instead. Are you okay proceeding with this instead of the repayment? So I think even with a policy, there's still going to be some degree of inherent flexibility, particularly as it concerns more of these economic development interfund loans as we go down, go down the road. But to your original question, it doesn't really add to workload, no?
And it doesn't, it, it will add to workload in general, but it's workload we already anticipated doing because we are doing more internal tracking and internal management and documentation on what we're doing. So we're basically just going to be providing that in a, you know, report format instead of a spreadsheet. So I don't, you know, those are conversations the Finance Director and I have had. Again, we're, we're really trying to up our documentation game on the inside. Not that we, again, we've got audits, you've got a sophisticated ERP system, every single transaction is being tracked, but then we're trying to create summary sheets and playbooks and things for everybody to kind of understand, hey, you got sixty-three funds or more, where's all the money? Because we don't ever want people to, to believe or understand there to be some kind of shell game where you're moving things from one place to the other. All of these interfund transfers are deliberate, planned, and then adjusted as economic conditions, cash flow and other things dictate, always for the best interest of the citizens and the, and the money that we have. Always trying to make the best use of the cash that we have.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a motion on the table?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to.
I think we're there.
We're there.
We're there because we should really have a motion before we have discussion.
We'll make a motion that we accept, consent agenda number seven.
Second.
Okay. Did anybody else have anything on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to ordinance resolution. Economic Development Kerry Shriners here and City Engineer Todd Nikleski is here and they're going to give us a little presentation on the next one, two, three, four, five things.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So yeah, listed here are the five agenda items related to the Man Valley Corporate Park construction project, which are included in tonight's council packet. Todd and I will be providing an update on each of these five items. First, in 2011 and 2013, the city purchased the land for the Man Valley Corporate Park. Since then, staff has been working on the creation of the corporate park, which will be the city's fourth and largest corporate park. Last year, council, you approved the updated concept plan, which you includes uses for light industrial and manufacturing, mixed-use development, including commercial and medium to high-density residential, low-density residential, institutional use and conservancy areas. The updated concept plan is based on the thirty percent preliminary design information that staff received in 2021. This updated concept plan provides greater lot flexibility and maximizes the overall developable acreage of the corporate park. The most impactful revision to the concept plan redirects off-site stormwater around the center of the proposed park to avoid bisecting the developable area. The plan also transitions from regional stormwater management to onsite stormwater management.
Okay, so we've been talking about this construction project for quite a while. S C H has been working on the final design since early 2022. John Prodey with S C H is in the audience here, in case there are any additional questions that he could better answer than I. But the, so in April of this year, we opened bids from, from, from our contractors, came in with some really good bid prices and that's for a ton of work. It's going to be a really big project that includes thirty-five thousand cubic yards of earthwork and that is to perform the stormwater redirection that Kerry mentioned, but it also includes about four and a half miles of water main. So that'll be new water main from, oh, thanks, Kerry. That'll be new water main from Paulson Road all the way down to County Highway M. That will include sanitary sewer from the east side of Radio Road all the way down to County Highway M, including a relocated lift station. The existing DeSantis Park lift station will be removed and replaced with the new lift station to the west. The existing sanitary sewer serving, the existing lift station will be extended west and then pumped back through New Forest Main into the new, or through New Forest Main into the old Forest Main and then continue all the way to Maple Street and down, down Apollo Road. The roadway construction, as you, as you can see, the roadway construction is really two, two stubs of roads to allow maximum future flexibility. But with just those two roadways, there's thirty-nine hundred feet of roadway construction along with about an associated mile of storm sewer to convey stormwater from that additional impervious area. And along the utility easement, which is going to extend from County Highway M all the way up to the, the north side of Powell Avenue, or up to Powell Avenue on the north of the project, there's about two miles of twelve-foot wide asphalt pavement to allow our water and wastewater crews to access the utilities and it will serve as a multi-use pedestrian facility. So as I mentioned, S C H prepared the final design and collected bids. The bidding was completed on, bids were opened, I can't remember the exact day, but late April. And we, we're actually sort of surprised that we only received two, two bids. There was a, there was a lot of, there's a lot of contractors that pulled plans and were asking questions, but we did receive two, two, what we feel are very good bids. In One Excavating for about fourteen point three million dollars and Haas Sons Inc. for thirteen point one, both of which were below the ninety percent plan design estimate of approximately fifteen point two million. So we feel like we're in a really good spot with construction plans, or I'm sorry, construction bid prices. Haas Sons Inc. is a large contractor out of Eau Claire that is competent, has done work of this nature. I have not personally had a project with Haas. S C H has and reported a good experience. Other peers of mine also have and have reported successful projects. Along with the awarding the construction project, we are proposing to utilize S C H as our consulting engineer to perform construction engineering services. Three major buckets of construction engineering services will be contract administration, construction observation, which is expected to be a significant task due to the potential geographic separation of multiple crews working, performing underground work at the same time. So what I mean is we fully expect to have one crew working on Radio Road and selling water main and potentially another crew on the far south side of the project and selling sanitary sewer and Forest Main and Water Main and building a lift station. And then another large component of the S C H contract will be construction staking. There's just this much work to go on the ground, requires a lot of, lot of pounding stakes and making sure that we pound them in the right spot.
Yeah, so as part of the Man Valley Construction Project, the city is proposing to create tax increment district number nineteen. Proposed TID nineteen is a mixed-use district comprising three hundred and eighty point nine three acres, including City of River Falls property and Mr. Gary Multer's property. The goal of this TID is to extend infrastructure to Man Valley Corporate Park, making it ready for large-scale development. And the city works closely with Ellers Public Finance Advisors to create the project plan and Sean from Ellers is here today as well, if there's any questions. City staff also works with Ellers to test the cash flow projections. The city typically tends to the conservative side of financing these projections. So for example, the tax rate is held steady throughout the twenty-year projection of the TID rather than increasing it throughout the term, which will most likely happen. The base value of the proposed TID nineteen is four hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and the projected future tax increment revenue is fifty-five million dollars over the twenty-year life. But again, this assumes a steady tax rate over the twenty years.
One of the major, another one of the items that you're considering tonight is the jurisdictional transfer of County Highway U from St. Craig County jurisdiction to city's jurisdiction. St. Craig County and their highway commissioner, the transportation committee and their board of supervisors have been a really supportive partner in this project and have passed a resolution to, to transfer this roadway to the city. The biggest benefit to transferring this roadway from county jurisdiction to city jurisdiction is that we have control of what goes in that right-of-way. We're, we're putting a lot of money underground there and it's a best practice to have jurisdictional control of that right-of-way.
Yeah, and finally, as part of the construction project, the city has negotiated the purchase of four point zero one five acres of property from Gary Multer and that's outlined in, or outlot one, two and three in the map that you see there. Purchasing this property from Mr. Multer allows Road A, which is in the Man Valley Concept Land, leading into the corporate park to align with the existing one hundred and forty-seventh street in the town of River Falls. So this alignment will ensure that the long-term growth can occur on a safe intersection and allows for the city to develop multiple, multifamily, high-density housing on approximately ten acres to the east of this road as shown in the concept plan. So where do we go from here? So the second joint review board meeting is scheduled to be held this Thursday. If the five resolutions in front of you tonight are approved, staff will proceed with awarding the construction contract and will give notice to proceed, will give Haas and Sons the notice to proceed. Construction is anticipated to start this September and will be completed in October 2024. And with that, Mayor, I will turn it back to you.
Thanks. So let's start with the first one, resolution creating tax incremental district number nineteen, approving this project plan and establishing boundaries for the city of River Falls. Take a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the resolution creating tax increment district number nineteen.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is resolution approving Man Valley Corporate Park construction contract with Haas Sons Incorporated.
I move approval. Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is resolution approving Man Valley Corporate Park construction engineering services with S C H Incorporated.
I move to approve. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is resolution approving jurisdictional transfer of a portion of County Trunk Highway U and Radio Road.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of a resolution transferring jurisdictional transfer of a portion of County Trunk Highway U and Radio Road from St. Craig County to the city of River Falls.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. Our, our friends in St. Craig County, we have a good relationship with them, but I know that we had a little bit of a misstep with the bridge on, was it, what, Apollo? And I remember back when we, when we took over Cascade Avenue from the state, there was a deemed useful life left in different parts of the city where we exchanged road. How do we feel that Radio Road is, I think it was just redone not too long ago, but I will ask the question, how, what shape is Radio Road in? Because when we take it over, it's our, it's ours.
Yes, we are, we are accepting jurisdictional transfer from the county where is, as is, how is.
Okay.
And unlike state numbered highway jurisdictional transfers, there is not a formula that estimates the current useful life and provides a financial payment if it's less than normal.
Okay.
So I guess our observations and, and our understanding of the condition of the road is it's new.
Okay, that's what I want to hear. That's my perception too, but.
It's like new, included.
To sell ya.
Yeah. And to be clear, on Powell, we did not accept the transfer, understanding it was new.
I know.
There was some disagreement about. There was some disagreement about the condition.
Exactly.
At the time of the transaction. So I, we are taking on a pretty substantial piece of road, which will increase our operating costs. And that's one of the reasons St. Croix would transfer it. But it also, but it also is a sign of partnership because.
Right.
Counties don't transfer highways without a really good reason, and they feel confident in our ability to maintain that. And so that, that's why we've negotiated. And Todd, did you have anything? I don't know what the Paser rating is. Do you know what the rating is of that road?
That sounds like it's important.
The, the, the roadway is in, I don't know, I don't know exactly what their Paser rating is either, but the roadway is in very good condition and is all recently reconstructed. I believe when we, we met with the highway commissioner, he said, we have just spent millions and millions of dollars on these roads. So I, I feel, I feel confident that.
So Paser goes to ten or nine as the highest score?
Ten.
So this road is at least an eight, but likely higher on the rating scale. Lawson is a what? Three?
It's a three. It's, it's one step.
And then what's a five right now or six in town that's close? Is Maple, is Maple here?
Boy, I have a, I have a hard, hard time picking out a, a five. Maybe Maple Street on the, on the east side of Maine.
So it's just a logistical question, but will Radio Road then be called, or will County Road U down in the southern part, will that become Radio Road then? And it'll go all the way from M to the highway?
We, we don't intend to change street names.
Well, County Road U it is right now.
Yep.
So that will become Radio Road?
The county will allow us to continue calling it County Highway U. And County Highway, Radio Road is, is currently double-named as County Highway U and Radio Road, and we don't intend to change anything.
Okay.
Yeah, there's an advantage for us from an economic development standpoint to maintain a county highway designation, which then runs essentially from the southwest, southwest corner of the Corporate Park all the way to ninety-four.
But that'll only be in name, right?
Well, it, but it's in name on Google, it's a name on Apple Maps. It's, it's pretty substant, significant as far as, I don't know that much anymore about, I used to know things about the trucking insurance, but a lot of trucking firms, semis, they have restrictions about where their trucks can go or how many miles off of a lettered or numbered road. So it's important to have that designation be maintained.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, opposed? Okay, last one's a resolution approving the purchase agreement between the City of River Falls and Gary Multer.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to the comptroller's report.
Can we clap first?
I was going to say, this has been a long time coming.
Long time coming.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of moving parts and a lot of staff work.
And, and Sean came all that way and didn't have to say anything, so thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Okay. Comptroller's report for April 2023. General fund revenues through the end of April were four million, five hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, or thirty-five point five percent of total budgeted revenues for the year. Revenues in April include, include eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars in building permit fees, for fifteen thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars from public work charges, and twenty-eight thousand, fifty dollars from franchise revenues. Expenditures through the end of April were three million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, or twenty-nine percent of total budgeted expenditures for the year. As of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, net revenues over expenditures were eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, next, in the, in the, in the packet was the 2022 Consumer Confidence Annual Water Quality Report. This is there, if council had any questions about this. Otherwise, I have one announcement.
Can I make, I meant to do it in a public comment, but I just wanted to make sure we realize next week is the beginning of June, and June is National Dairy Month. So, you know, grab a slice of cheese, a handful of curds, a glass of chocolate milk to rehydrate yourself, or a sundae or a cone. This year for the dairy industry, they're committed to reduce, reducing their environmental footprint, so. And I don't know how many of you know it, but milk is the only food you can survive on alone. It has all the nutrients you need. So we're in America's dairyland, let's be proud of our dairy industry. So anyway, just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you.
And I'd like to, if I could, add that no mo may ends that day too.
O your grass.
Yeah. Okay, I have one announcement, I have a proclamation to read. Recognition of, of June being recognition of Pride Month. Whereas the City of River Falls strives to be an inclusive community, an employer of choice as part of our efforts to be a distinct, vibrant, and safe place for people of different backgrounds to call home. Whereas in 2007, the city council resolved to make inclusiveness a fundamental aspect and everyday priority for our community. Whereas the month of June has been recognized as Pride Month throughout the nation since 1999. Whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and is an opportunity to engage in dialogue, to strengthen alliance, and continually build understanding and acceptance. And whereas the City of River Falls is honoring Pride Month through support, recognize and celebrate the contributions and diversity of the LGBTQ members of our community. Now for their, I, Mayor Dan Tolman, the City of River Falls, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 to be Pride Month in the City of River Falls and authorize the, the, the pride, the pride flag to be flown at City Hall during the month as a sign of our commitment to celebrating diversity and prioritizing inclusivity. Given under my hand and seal, the City of River Falls, this twenty-third day of May, 2023. Next, recess in the closed session per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one E for the following purposes: deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining, bargaining reasons require a closed session. To it, River Falls Industrial Park, St. Croix County Parcels, two seven six dash one oh four one dash two oh dash one oh one, and two seven six dash one oh four one dash two oh dash one one one.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we move into closed session.
Second.
Second.
Christie, can we have a roll call, please?
Odine.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Morrisette.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Biersted.
Yes.
York.
Yes.
All right.